Good morning, everyone. I welcome you to the regular board meeting for the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. We appreciate everyone's presence and appreciate your interest in all the different issues that we're handling today. We look forward to a very productive and meaningful meeting for the system. Right now, we will have our invocation by Presidents of senior colleagues of Wallace
Good morning on this beautiful day post-election. Would you bow with me? O mighty and sovereign God of all, hear us. We thank you for your generous blessings, both great and small, and we ask that you guide us in using our talents for the benefit of those we serve. We come humbly to you today, asking for guidance, wisdom, and discernment as decisions are made to benefit the Alabama Community College System, its students, and our state. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, and continue to remind us that all that transpires here today, all that is accomplished, are for the services of humanity. O Spirit of God, we ask you to help orient all our actions by your inspirations, carry them on by your gracious assistance, that every prayer and work of this Board of Trustees and the leaders of our great state and nation may always begin from you and through you be happily ended. We pray for the safety and success of our first responders, and our military, and their families. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
In just a minute, we'll pledge allegiance to the flag, and I think it's especially significant week that we have our national elections and that we're honoring our veterans. So, if you'll please stand with me, and we'll acknowledge that and be thankful for our great performance. Attention, salute, witness.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on our agenda, the item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda that we have for today, November 9th. All the trustees have received this in advance, have had an opportunity to review the items on the agenda. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Motion by Mr. Davis, second by Mr. Colwell. Any discussion about the agenda? If there being none, all those in favor of approving the agenda submitted, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item five is the approval of the minutes of the October 12th, 2016 meeting. Once again, the trustees receive these minutes in advance of today and have an opportunity to look them over and review them. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Smith to approve the minutes of October 12th meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Item four. Any discussion of the minutes? If there being none, all those in favor of the approving minutes of October 12th meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? No one signed up for public comment? Item seven, academic and student affairs, adult education facilities, physical information technology, workforce development. Item seven, A1, is the authorizing resolution for bond issue for Focker State Community This is a bond issue that will cover partial funding for the renovation of the Tyson Technology Center and the Branch Business Center, and also construct an additional information technology center. This has been on our work session and has been discussed at the table. Is there a motion to approve item seven? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Troy. Any discussion on the enabling resolution? Mr. President, would you like to go ahead? Well, let's see, do we, maybe ask, do you want to go ahead and fire or vote out? Why don't you go ahead and speak on both of them right now? We have a motion and a second on the floor for Focker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Preston Bolt. I'm on bond counsel for both of the bond issues that are before you today, and these are the first issues that have been publicly sold that is not placed privately with a bank since this board was formed, and the first financing since 2012 for post-secondary that had been done in that manner. Because of various issues, rates, and the uses of funds, the issues that have been done that you have approved and the state board before you approved since 2012 have largely been placed with banks that are shorter in term and had good interest rates. So, this is the first time that we have longer-term bonds that require that we go to the public market. With that in mind, I was asked to sort of address, or I suggested and was asked to address, the fact that these are securities and that you are selling these in the public market and that this board is responsible for that sale. There are, the SEC, not the SEC that we think about, but the Security and Exchange Commission, is very concerned with these kinds of securities and very concerned that the disclosure about them be adequate. And we spend a lot of time with the colleges and with the board and with your financial advisory, PFM, to make sure that that information, and with the underwriters who are hired to do this, to make sure that the information that's presented is complete and accurate. But ultimately, they will be looking to the board to say that the information is adequate, and that's what we have you say as part of the documentation that we sign in connection with each of these issues. The primary protection for that is a document that looks like this. It's a prospectus that's called an official statement. I've got a copy for each of you if you want to read it tonight and go to sleep. But essentially, what it does is it describes the college, it describes the board, it describes the finances that are, of the college, and it describes the revenues that are placed to secure the debt, which as you know is limited to tuition and fee revenues of certain types. And it describes the tax status of the bonds and other various kinds of things that are important to investors. You are entitled to rely on us as experts, on your financial advisors as experts, on your staff to help you prepare. But if you have any questions or you have ever had any reason to believe that some of the information concerning any of those things might be inaccurate, you should ask them. And it's incumbent on you under the securities laws, and I'm not trying to scare everyone here, I just want you to understand that the board does have some duties as far as the SEC is concerned, and they have gone after public officials in the past in very egregious circumstances, and circumstances like self-dealing and other things that have nothing to do with any of these issues. But because it's a serious thing with them, it's a serious thing with us, and I want to make sure everybody's aware of it. I'm always happy to answer any questions about any of the issues that we're working on. I know that Phil Dotson, his group at PFM, I know that the underwriters who are working on a particular issue would also be glad to provide information. So, we just wanted to sort of put that out there to you and offer answering questions at this point or later on, if you are happy.
Any questions?
If the board approves this, what does the execution take?
This, the Focker issue is scheduled to close on November 16th, and the Jeff State issue is scheduled to close on November 7th. So, the bonds have been sold in the usual way. You preliminary approved everything at your pre-public meeting, and they've been sold subject to your approval of final authorizing resolutions, and then closed within, usually within two weeks after that.
Do we have the ability down the road to re-financialize the rates?
You have the ability to refinance for, the rules are a little different for the key issues. In the case of Focker, you can do what's called an advance refunding at any time if the rates justify that. But I could, my practice in law, after 10 years, you've got the right to refinance ultimately at Focker, even with any layoffs, any bonds, interplace that within.
You still have a conflict?
Yes.
Sure. You made it.
This is actually saying, version of the Focker.
Any other questions for Mr. Bolt? Anything else?
That's all?
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Once again, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We have before us the authorizing resolution for the Focker State Community College bond issue, and there's been a motion and a second. Please throw a discussion. If not, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Brown, by voice?
Aye.
Aye for Ms. Brown. Those opposed. Motion carries. Next is item seven, A2, which is Jefferson State Community College bond refunding. This has been on the work session agenda as well, and has resulted in significant savings, I think, for the system. Is there a motion to approve this? Motion. Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second? Second by Mr. Davis. Once again, we have the bond refunding for Jefferson State Community College before us here. There's been a motion and a second. We'll, in discussion. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Next, under item eight, A1, is renewal of lease agreement with Alabama Department of Agriculture and Industry at Wallace State Community College, Chancellor. Once again, this was on the work session agenda, been thoroughly reviewed, the trustees had adequate information, some good discussion on this. Is there a motion to approve? Aye, A1, authorizing motion. Motion by Mr. Colwell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Foley. Any discussion? If there being none, we'll close debate. All those in favor of the renewal of lease agreement with Alabama Department of Agriculture and Industries, by Wallace State Community College, Chancellor, please raise your hand or voice vote.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, item eight, A2, which is our Alabama Community College general liability insurance. Once again, that was discussed at work session. Mr. Bryant, do you have anything to add to that?
Motion.
Jimmy, MC Dennis. Okay.
I know this is scheduled for the work session, but I think you need to go ahead and just talk about the other portion of liability that we're working on.
All right.
If you will, go ahead in this environment, just talk about that.
All right. In addition to the general liability policy, we were tasked to review and solicit quotes for cyber liability insurance coverage. We have done so and are prepared to offer to the board at work session this afternoon a summary of proposed coverage along with its cost. I have the executive summary by the board this afternoon that will summarize the proposed coverage along with the policy limits.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Yes, sir. Is there a motion to approve item eight, A2, the general liability insurance? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brown. Discussion. Any questions for Mr. O'Brien about this? Once again, this was presented to us at the work session. We have a proposal for total annual premium of $154,152.62 for these lines of insurance.
If we select the same provider for the cyber coverage, is there a possibility of getting some kind of a discount by having to carry the CGL as well as cyber?
The proposal for the cyber is a different carrier. It's pretty safe broker.
Any other questions? Discussion. If being none, we'll end the debate. All those in favor of approving the general liability insurance quote for the Alabama Community College system, raise your hand or voice vote. Those opposed. Motion carries. Item nine, personnel, anything change?
Yes. I'd like to use today to new colleague in the system. One is Boone Cannard, I can't remember what you want to say. Boone has been working in the Speaker's office for the last seven years. He's coming to work with us, he'll be working with himself in governmental affairs. We are excited about what he brings to the table.
Thank you.
And Barbara Ann Spears is coming to us from Central. She's been in the system for a significant number of years, particularly considering how young she is. Barbara Ann is fully serving as Assistant Chief Academic Officer, Chief Academic and Student Affairs Officer, working closely with Russ from, excited to have these two people great additions to our department.
On behalf of the board, welcome to both of you. We're so glad to have you, look forward to working with you in the days ahead. Anything else on the personnel? There, now, item 10, Chancellor's report.
I want this to be interpreted as a foreintention of late explained to me by all the questions. But I do feel like, I want to make a very brief report on a number of issues that are ongoing in the department, in the system, and I've asked Russ if he could take the responsibility and put it back together and hopefully that, and we're open for questions and discussion as we go along.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker, Vice President Thompson, members of the board. If you could look at the last tab in your book, or the tab under Chancellor's report, you'll see two pages of system-wide initiatives in there. What I want to highlight to you, which is very significant, is these initiatives are made up of work teams of presidents, individuals from the college staff, as well as system employees as resources. We think it's very important to have that kind of wide-range input into a lot of these key initiatives that not only affect what happens in the system, but truly across the state to make our system even stronger. And as the Chancellor mentioned, I'll go through these fairly quickly because you do have the list there, and we do want to have an opportunity for you to, if you have any questions, you need additional information. The first one is the policies, and as you, as a new board, have been in your roles for just over a year, you're very familiar with where we are with the policies, and I want to give you just a real quick update. The 200 series are the local college administration policies. I know you'll have a little bit of a discussion this afternoon in your work session on those. But a couple of other ones that I know that have been questioned on in our colleges, are anxious and have done a wonderful job of providing input on are the 600, 700, and 800 series. The 600 series, we're talking about the post-secondary faculty credentials, have a team working on those. The other two that are further along are the 700 series, which deals with all the instructional policies that have been put together and submitted to the presidents and the instructional officers associations and the colleges for their feedback. The 800 series committee has reviewed all of the policies related to student services, and then we'll be distributing those shortly to the presidents and the colleges for their input as well. So, we're hopefully going to have those to you and your subcommittee very soon for your review, and any questions that we can be helpful to answer for those. We are glad to do that. The other two pieces, next on that line, is the presidential search. Wanted to let you know that we do have a committee working on putting together the timeline and a flowchart, and by the next board meeting, you will have a complete flowchart of how we plan to look at the presidential searches. In particular, the ones coming up that you've discussed at Shelton State, we're looking for the online comment portal for that to be open November 21st through December 2nd, and this is a tentative timeline. The committee's working on finalizing this, and we'll give you the report, but wanted to give you kind of what we were thinking, so you can provide any feedback. Looking at the application process opening on December 7th, and according to the policy procedure, it needs to be opened for that process has to be filled by 120 days, so we have put in the other steps to this. As I mentioned, by 12:08, we'll have that flowchart for you, how this will progress. 103, we'll look at the application processes closing, and then in the April board meeting, the ball goes as planned. You'll have an opportunity to approve the next president, and we'll get more information to you on that as we go. For the presidential evaluation, we have, yes, sir?
Let me talk about that.
Yes.
Because in conjunction with that, it's our intentions not to have two searches going as far as posting and receiving applications at the same time. However, we can't wait until the complete process is completed, so we plan to look at this one to follow up on this as soon as we can after the application time is closed on the first announcement. So, we'll be working overtime on that process, but we have a lot to do to go on with that system.
The presidential evaluation process, we have six presidents right now that are meeting, along with some resource staff from the system office, evaluating currently the process used for presidential evaluation, and will be making some recommendations on how we can do that process better and be more supportive of our presidents in those institutions. The strategic plan, we've talked about considerably. We have six goals that we've discussed. Many of the things that you see in this initiative sheet are from the strategic plan and some of those key projects and indicators. We're also working on developing a comprehensive marketing and communication plan to the government and external affairs area. And another piece, kind of going through the list very quickly, is the professional development. I'm going to take a little bit more time on this because Chancellor Baker has talked about how important this is, not only for the system staff, but for colleges and all of the employees that serve our students. One of the events I want to highlight to you that's coming up is the Alabama Community College Association Conference, which is November 20th through the 22nd. There will approximately be 800 administrators, faculty, and support staff attending. And in your books, in the last tab, you'll see an invitation to you for the Chancellor's Awards Breakfast, which is Tuesday morning, November 22nd. So, we hope that you would be able to join us there as well. The other piece that the ACCA Executive Committee has done, and it's very promising, they've put together a series of webinars. We've recognized how important professional development is, and trying to reach out across the state, and trying to do it efficiently and effectively, and also in terms of cost savings, have done five different webinars since August, where we've had nearly 700 registrants and people attending, which has been a wonderful opportunity. Moving on to the compliance division, and that initiative that you've all talked about that is in its some stages of being put together. Dr. Robinson previously has done a couple of presentations to the board about college readiness and her developmental education task force, and we're happy to report that the pilot with SREB in the high schools and the partnership is moving forward, and seeing some positive results and communications with secondary, and we know how important that is as we continue to work in supporting open access and college readiness. Industry credentials, and our CTE staff, Kristi Bane, did a presentation to you in your work session not too long ago, and wanted to share with you the continued work with that. She's visited and worked with 12 colleges thus far, and eight additional scheduled, and it is going exceedingly well. Colleges have been very receptive. The CTE staff and Kristi and that whole team are doing a wonderful job in supporting of those colleges and really aligning our certifications with the national-recognized credentials. The longitudinal data system, Mr. Davis here on the advisory committee along with the Chancellor, we also have four additional staff members within the system. They're on the implementation committee. That work is just getting started. The first meeting was November 3rd, and their next meeting will be December 7th. And another key highlight is I wanted to share with you, at 2:00 today, there is a memorandum of understanding press event that we will be hosting on statewide reverse transfer. And if I could just thank the colleges and the staff, this has been a process long in coming in terms of a lot of people put in a lot of significant work in this, and will have wonderful value to our students in terms of increased credentials. So, we'll be doing that celebration this afternoon with that MOU signing, and looking forward to that aspect. And then Chancellor, yes, sir?
Everybody is, may not have been involved in that. Can you generally explain it?
If we have a student that happens to leave our two-year institution and transfers to a four-year institution prior to completing their associate degree, the reverse transfer allows and sets up a formal process where we will proactively look to see if the students have earned enough credits at the four-year institution that can then transfer back to the two-year institution, so that we can award that student an earned credential, what's primarily for an associate degree, but there are states that also look at offering certificates and other opportunities. So, and we'll have the National Director from the National Student Clearinghouse on reverse transfer will be here this afternoon, and will share some great student success stories, and how important that has been to other states in really increasing the number of credentials that have, the students have already earned, but just haven't been awarded. So, we're looking forward to formalizing that process in the state of Alabama. And Chancellor Baker, did you want to mention the campus works?
Sure. And this, I'll have to talk about as well. I had an interesting discussion yesterday, but I think it was kind of, in preparation with this, I did break it up, it was brought up by a constitution officer at the state who made the comment, and I totally agree with this, that it is evaluated. who made the comment, and I totally agree with this, that it is evaluated, it was obvious that the best solution for the state of Alabama to move forward and solve a lot of our problems was to improve and enhance what we're doing in the community college system. But the point being, if people are comfortable with themselves and their opportunities to make a living, they just really do a better job of the system. And I appreciated that comment then he had given this, but Jimmy, you've got to find a way to make sure that the community college system is ready. I made a comment, I think, in class the other day, I said that education is certainly headed to environment, for its own personal to the person, or the state, or detail, and or define, and data-driven. We find ourselves not in the best position that we should be in relative to our empire as far as they do, across the board. I'm no expert in that world, and we have no choice but to become experts in the process. So I have made the decision to move forward through the program with Campus Works to do an assessment across the board, including in terms, because we can't provide the leadership unless we are capable of doing what we should be doing. But to look across the system as a whole and evaluate where we are relative to the world technology, which we all, wow, we think it's important today, we think it's dominant, but it is going to get old and old on the network every day. So we've got to get up to speed. It's my mission, and I believe the mission of all of you in charge of the students, we're going to do everything we can so that everyone in the legislative body understands that we have a system that we can do. So we've got a lot of work to do, and I appreciate all the support that I'm going to get in that process, that Campus Works is going to give, as they work with me, and come to you and talk to you about what do we need to do, what do we have in the way of access, what don't we have, how effective are we in what we're doing. And it was my decision that I needed, and I find, a third party independently who wasn't trying to market some software, but who wanted to come into the system. I talked to colleges across the country, I talked to trustees, colleges across the country, and talked about where Campus Works have been in their environment. And I felt comfortable that they can come to work with us over a period of time, not talking about a long period of time. I experienced it generally, that if we take two years, it'll take three, we can probably do everything we need to do in a much shorter period of time, and probably do it just to look at it. So that's kind of where we're headed, so plus, that's another comment.
Well, with that, what I would like to do is just share that I have worked with Liz and Campus Works for a number of years at another institution, and familiar with the work that they do, as well as other companies, and very much looking forward to the assessment and the recommendations that we get from them to help give us the data and information that we need to make positive decisions, so we can be that resource that we need to be, not only for our institutions, but for our students. And with that, I want to introduce the expert, and she'll share with you kind of what the plan is for that, and I'm going to apologize, because as I was standing up there, I realized I didn't get any information from her about how to introduce her. So I'm just going to say, here's Liz Murphy, who's the CEO of Campus Works, and we welcome you and thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Chancellor Baker did a lot of my work, so this could be very brief, maybe. We really appreciate the opportunity to partner with the Alabama Community College System. I have been here over the last 25 years several times, as you have looked to try to maybe consolidate IT a little bit in terms of the systems that you're using, and come up to speed on some new and more contemporary solutions. What's so fascinating right now is how many systems are having this exact conversation right this minute. We currently are working with six other systems, a combination of community college systems or systems that cover both four-year and two-year institutions, who are having the exact same conversation. And what's driving the conversation is access. When I looked at your vision, what you're trying to make happen as a community college system, which is to create a prosperous and educated society, the people in your state have options, you're really trying to keep people working in the state. That happens to be perfectly aligned with the vision that we have at Campus Works, which is to make higher education more accessible to everyone. Well, how do we do that? The costs are skyrocketing. You have really set out as a goal to make education accessible by keeping your tuition down, by making it geographically more accessible. That creates a lot of challenges for you, and unfortunately, you're further challenged because your technology is not enabling you to uplift those two things. So you're working harder to make those two things happen. So where you could have economies of scale, or you could reduce costs by using automation, or you could provide greater services, you're strapped with old software or old practices, or too many people in the kitchen cooking the same pot of sauce. And so this exercise that we're going to take your entire system through is designed to do a number of things. The first is designed to engage the community, and engage the community in a way where they all get to talk about what the needs are for their individual college students. This is all about the students. While technology may be the thing that lifts you up, this is not a technology project. It is an assessment. We're going to look at where technology may not be serving you well, but there are other things that can in the way of student success as well, and accessibility. And those things get trapped in and behind all the hard work that's being done by your colleges, by your staff, by your faculty and staff, in order to run faster to meet the ever-changing needs that your students have, particularly when you don't have the tools to support them. I want to walk through with you some of the thinking around the tailored approach we've put together for the community college system, and then I want to make sure there's time for questions from the board as well. So we're looking forward to a shared services opportunities. We are not coming in trying to check boxes in a particular direction. Our approach at Campus Works is to engage every single one of the institutions, and as a result of that, we've set up three regional centers where we're going to be doing listening sessions. And we're also going to be reaching out through surveys, so anybody who can't participate in person is going to be able to have a voice. We use a method of appreciative inquiry to really learn what's working well and where the gaps are, and we always begin our questioning with the student experience. What's the experience you're trying to create for your students? Each institution in this system is unique for a very specific reason. Your populations are different. Your programs, to some degree, are different. The demographic needs, the workforce needs in your community are different. To be responsive in those areas means you have to have the knowledge to be able to personalize, as Chancellor Baker said, the response you make to students. It is really tough to be a student in this environment today. And those of you who are presidents know this, and you could probably stand up and talk about three students you talked to yesterday who are struggling to make it to class today. Think about their lives. They're working full-time. Many of them are single parents. They may not be paid a living wage. They're trying to figure out how to come up, and they keep getting pushed down. And then we say to them, well, you know what? I need you to come to campus to make this happen. I need you to find that parking space. I need you to fit this in between your lunch hour and when you have to pick up your child from daycare, so you don't get charged more. Do you know how easy technology would make that? Pick up your smartphone. In today's environment, that's the magic. So we don't want technology for technology's sake. We want technology so that you can enable a student to actually get to the part where they're doing the learning. There's too many obstacles. If it's too hard for me, I won't get there. So how do I get there? I'm going to surround them with people who can provide service? That's why costs in education are skyrocketing. In average, across all higher education, post-secondary education in the United States, 85% on average of all costs are personnel costs. Yet, what students desire is services that have no human interaction related to them till they get to the classroom. Why? Because they want to do it at 2:00 a.m. They want to do it at 11:30 after they put their children to bed. If you don't provide them the way to make that happen, they're just going to keep plugging along, and they're never going to improve their underlying foundation, which is going to make it better. So what do we do about that? You cannot keep adding the people at your colleges to make this work happen. There's not the budget for that either. So we've got to use technology smartly. Let the technology do the administrivia. Let the technology do the repeatable things. Let the technology work for you. Let it take care of 80% of those administrative tasks that your students struggle with, so that you have time for the 20% who need the extra TLC, who need the little extra bump, who need the little extra push. The other thing that has to happen is there has to be a connectedness between and among your institutions, because people are more mobile than they've been before. And so the more you can share, whether it's expertise, or knowledge, or experiences, or actual staff, the more value and the richer services you can bring to your students, as well as the richer programs you can bring. So when we go through this assessment process, we're looking for those things that you can do once and push out to all, but that don't tread on the personalities and the distinctive competencies of the individual institutions. What makes you great is what makes you different, but really, how many different ways should we process payroll? I would suggest to you, that's no place for creativity, right? I would suggest to you, there's no creativity in debits and credits, and if there is, you have a whole nother problem. So there are things that really can be done once and shared with many, but if you don't have the underlying foundation to make that happen, it becomes a real struggle, and service does not get delivered. Part of what you're struggling with within the system, and I know Chancellor Baker will be okay if I observe this, because we talked about it, your system, your IT system at the community college system level is not working for you. It's not enabling the colleges to rise up. It's not taking the fundamental foundational burdens off your plates, so that you can count on that work being done, so you could tend to the things that make your institution distinctive in the classroom. That's where you should be spending your time and energy, not worrying about network protocols, not worrying about cybersecurity. There are some responsibilities at the system level that should be owned, and we're going to figure out which ones those are, and we're going to figure out how to make that happen as part of this process. So today, you have this overgrown labyrinth, right? How did it get there? Well, you were tending to it, and then you carved it out, and it looked like it was going to be a good plan, and over time, the weeds took over, the gardeners got cut back, and now I can't really see the path clearly. So this project is really designed to help you clear the path. We're the gardeners. We're the gardeners. We didn't create the original path, and we may have to cut in a new path, but we do it in collaboration with you in this process. So clearing the labyrinth, we begin first with a system office and a college IT assessment. So while this is not an IT project, it begins by understanding where you are. No judging, just observing. So you have to, you didn't get there because anybody was malevolent in the process. You got there one small decision at a time. And sometimes you got there because you thought you didn't have the resources to do it a different way, or the way you really wanted to do it. So this is an opportunity to say, where are you, and where should you go? So it'll be a very deep assessment that covers everything from the network to security to Wi-Fi, all the technical things, as well as application moving forward. We'll then do an IT skills analysis across the entire system and the colleges. Why is that? Because you've got talent, and you've got hidden talent. How many times do we hire someone? They have a fabulous resume. We put that person in a job, and we forget all the other experiences he had, except for the job he's doing for us. Today, 21st century IT takes a totally different kind of view. It takes an understanding of the business of higher education, and it is a business, believe you me. Any of you who are in the finance office, you know it's a business. And if the business doesn't run well, you can't take care of your customers. So we've got to unearth what it's going to take to meet the needs that are out there, and you've got people who are closet programmers, who don't get to use those skills when they're at work, but they're hobbyists and use them at home. So we're trying to unearth that and understand whose skills are stale, whose skills are laying dormant and not being used to benefit you. You also have people who are doing amazing work at the colleges, and that talent really needs to be shared throughout the system. And then there'll be the college listening sessions, and those will be done regionally. So we're planning on hitting every single institution coming in there, and we'll have a team there talking, using this appreciative inquiry in each one of the areas. In those sessions, we're going to unearth everything from how difficult it may be to do their jobs, to what really works right now. What do they wish they could do for students? Where are they not able to support faculty? What is it about the applications that gets in the way? What's the other support that they need? All of that information will culminate in an overall report and a roadmap we'll talk about in a minute. Then there'll be an organizational assessment, because the way you do business today is probably not the way you're going to be successful in the 21st century. You know, as we make changes organizationally, we rarely clear the decks. We just add something else. So you know, I think about a house that you've added on to, and added on to, and added on to, and when you stand back and look at it, you say, oh, they added on to it, and added on to it, and added on to it. This is a chance to say, you know what? I'm going to etch a sketch, that picture, I'm going to erase it completely, and I'm going to build a new blueprint. You must build a new blueprint if you're going to thrive in the 21st century in higher ed. There are new business models coming. We don't know what they are yet, but I'm confident state and local government will struggle to provide increases in the level of support that we need to keep these institutions running. And I personally don't believe America can run without its community colleges. You are what keeps America working. So that means we need to figure out some business models that are going to work to make that happen. So we're prepared, so we have options. Organizationally, you have to be put in a shape where you can move and collaborate a lot more easily than you do today, and so you can really leverage and optimize your resources. Finally, all of this culminates in a roadmap that says, here's how you can get from here to there. It will be a very well-informed roadmap. Typically, in a system of your size, will have anywhere from 300 to 550 people participate in this process. The more people, the better. The more voices, the better. Inclusion is encouraged, and there is no bad idea, and there's nothing you can say that would offend us or deter us for that matter. We know what we're asking, and we're also asking you to be brave in the process, because to really make change, you have to be willing to surrender. to really make change, you have to be willing to surrender. The assessment process actually is scheduled to close in January. So we're starting. My team has already started to prepare. I thank the presidents and their teams, because they're already pulling together all of the discovery documents. They're building notebooks and files for us, and we review all that before we start. I actually think we may be on campus before Thanksgiving, is it? So it starts very soon. It starts very soon. This is an overview of the SWOT analysis, which will be conducted as part of the IT assessment, and you can see the comprehensive nature of that. We'll gather that information from each of the colleges as well. And then at the regional listening sessions, the focus is really on being sure that we're capturing the requirements and the needs. To put together a beautiful plan that isn't based in the reality of where you are now, I'm a big believer in begin where you are today and move forward from there. But also, I know you have aspirations. Several of you have already said to me today, we are so ready for this. We are ready to have this conversation. We want to go. So we want to capture all that information as well. The most important byproduct of all this will be this business optimization roadmap, and it'll have several parts to it, not the least of which is recommendations of things you can do right now in order to make improvements. Secondly, it will also provide suggestions and recommendations and a little, the highest level cost benefit on what you could provide in terms of shared services. Where does it make sense to share? What would that look like? What does sharing mean? We've worked with clients who have said, okay, this college is going to do payroll for everybody. This college is going to handle purchasing for everybody. And they get more staff to handle that and all that kind of stuff, but rather than having things dispersed as they were before, it's changed. So there are really creative ways to do it. Maybe it's done at the system level, but maybe it's not. There's a lot of new models now for shared services, and the best are those tailored to what works best in your environment and what everybody can buy into. At the end of that, we'll also have staffing recommendations, IT organizational structure recommendations, and we will have a recommendation relative to your administrative systems. So those of you in business have heard the phrase ERP for software, enterprise resource planning. In higher education, that includes the student information system, the financial management system, and the human resources or human capital management system, and fundraising In the system, you're bifurcated, in that some of you have Banner and some of you have Alliant. And one of the reasons you have data challenges, it's probably not the only reason, is because you come from two very, very different systems with very, very different technologies. The other reason is probably your data's probably pretty ugly after all these years. Not anybody's fault, just the way it is. It gets really ugly over time as it gets used and abused on the path, right? One of the ways to enable student services is really to put you on a platform that's more modern and contemporary and does not take so much effort to keep going. And in some of your institutions, you're running very smoothly, but you're in the minority. Others of you are really struggling and don't have the resources, either in the technology itself or the staff, in order to move forward and really offer your students a similar experience across the entire system. So we're going to be looking at that software as well. So the objective is really to get to this. And this picture is chosen on purpose. You notice his hand is wrapped in a bandage. And the reason it's wrapped in a bandage is there's some bumps and bruises along the way, but he's really happy with the outcome. This is the picture we have to keep in mind. I want you to think of this picture when we talk about change and when we really push your teams, and when they come back, presidents, to you and say, really not on board with this process. Really, just not on board with it. Not happy about it. Don't want to play. Don't make me do it. Really happy doing what we're doing. This process takes courage, takes a lot of courage, but there's no time like now. Systems nationwide are asking questions like this, and the brave ones are acting. You will not thrive if you remain decentralized. The math doesn't work. The other thing is, I ask you to think about the future, not your tenure. You might have to be the person, the board, the president, the faculty member, who has to live with the change in this transition, but you're positioning for the future. And if you don't make these hard decisions today, you won't be a viable system for the I'll turn it over for questions about clearing the labyrinth.
You're excited about it.
We will need your support, because there is a speed bump process you go through here. So before you can get to-- our goal for you is to ultimately lower operating costs and increase your service. But you can imagine that before you get to that point, you have to make investments. And we're not exactly sure where those investments are going to be required, and that's going to take courage on the part of the board, because it will take stop, think, then go. And there'll have to be some recalibration, I think, in the process, particularly if we start looking at software applications, et cetera, and staffing to get there. So I'd ask for your patience and your thoughtfulness and your open-mindedness as you go through the process.
Yes, sir. An observation. Old trustees, I think you've been in your position of regional office. I think that's going to be a big asset to help, if you don't take it. And the one that I'm getting at, we're talking about three colleges, initially. There's 12 campuses. And then we'll be bringing out, we've studied four colleges, and the Alabama and the East is somewhere, and Urban Campus. So I see that in your vision of regional office, it's probably, I mean, it's not a town, eight, 30, 40, 50, 60, 70, 80. I see that, that you've already taken a major decision. And in our region, we're having to do a lesser sale than what we're talking about in the district. We're having to look at everything that we've done, all the attempts, just like perfectly paid. Just last year, 11, they don't want to put it together. I mean, there's nothing to pay to watch what happened, with the hanging machines on. So I would recommend, with the leadership of the council, like you, you could, I couldn't push through your equation, but you're the one who, you know, you understand what you're doing with that.
I do. I am.
Anything else from the board? Thank you, Dr. Brandon.
Thank you, Liz. I appreciate it. This is going to be a tough day. I tell you what, I will never want to remember this. You may have a great student. I believe a lot of you do. But you're not as good as you can be. If we have a system that is collectively headed in the same direction and using all of our resources for the benefit of the system, you can have a better student. And we can only get there with your help and your support, and I'm counting on it.
Thank you, Chancellor Baker. Chancellor Baker, I want to thank you for this update of the system-wide initiatives. This is excellent communication, and I know that the rest of the board is very appreciative of this. Russ, thank you for presenting it, but this is very important. Once again, thank you so much for your presentation. This part will be just excellent. We're excited and looking forward to see what we'll learn. Anything else from the trustees? We have our, we'll reconvene after adjournment at a work session at 1:00 p.m. in the president's conference room. Our next regular board meeting will be December 14th in this boardroom. And Chancellor, I believe that we have scheduled a joint lunch with the State Board of Education on the 14th. So we're looking forward to that, to fellowship and communicate with our colleagues in K-12s. Anything else from the trustees? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I would like to express appreciation. We've kind of done a lot of things the last few weeks, and it's, I don't know, Ron, your group has been working hard, other committees on the board have been working hard. That's important to us, and if we bother you sometime unnecessarily, let us know. And we'll keep bothering you probably, but at least we'll know about it. But the communication process has been a good experience. I would need to know.
Thank you for letting us give us permission to bother you.
Chancellor Baker, I just think that all the trustees have shown excellent commitment of time and energy, and I sure appreciate it. From all those who've done committee work and everything else, I, they're just, I've never worked with a better group of individuals. I thank Crystal and Mary Scott for participating by teleconference today, and all the trustees have just done a great job. It's been a great, great period of cooperation thus far. Any other, is there a motion or a question? A motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Smith to adjourn. I was a favor saying I, we stand adjourned.[1528.65]